Excellent. Yes, we can. And I see that Kelly has just started the recording, so we will get going. Thanks to everybody for hanging in there with us while we gathered everyone together this morning and sorry for the delay. So I am calling this meeting of the Public Safety Communications Task Force to order. It is 11:32 on February 28th, 2024, and I'm Barbara Neal. As a reminder, the meeting is being recorded, and that recording will be posted to the task force webpage following the meeting. We will start with a roll call of task force members. Please verbally acknowledge your presence when I call your name. Jen Morrison.
I'm here.
Okay, Ron Kumitz?
Here.
Thank you. Jim Mack?
Here.
Okay, and I'm here as well, making the quorum. So we do not have today Paul White, Michael Wright, or Mike Dungus at this point. So also joining us is Kelly Odette as our administrative support and our project management partners from TeleVate Rick and Dom. Good morning, everybody. And
Good morning.
We, we have several members of the public with us as well. Actually, let me start first with Corey Chase. Corey, would you introduce yourself and let folks know who you are?
Good morning. I'm Corey Chase. I'm the Director for the Radio Technology Services Division at the Department of Public Safety.
Thank you. I will just go down through the list of people I see on the screen. So Stephen, let's start with you.
Steve Whitaker.
Morning. Becky Robinson, and I believe you're joined by a couple people.
Yes, Becky Robinson from Northern Borders Dispatch, and I have Ray Gorman and Don Campbell, who are also board members of my dispatch board.
Okay, great. Welcome. Kim Cheney.
Good morning. Just an interested member of the public. I'm looking forward to hearing what everybody has to say. Somewhere during this meeting, I hope somebody could give me an idea of what's happening in the legislature.
Okay, welcome. Richard Townend.
Good morning, Richard Townend from Alteris Technology Partners. I apologize for the background noise. I'm not in the best location.
Okay, actually, I wasn't hearing anything in the background, so I think you're good. Phil Sisk.
Good morning, Phil Sisk with Mission Critical Partners.
Morning. And Senator Renner.
Good morning, Senator Irene Renner, in the North District.
Welcome. Okay, anybody I missed? All right. So let's start with, or go next to approval of the agenda. The agenda was distributed to task force members by email. It is also available on our webpage. Do task force members have any changes to the agenda for today?
Yeah, out of respect to the folks who came to give public comment, let's put that above the approval of the minutes. Let's just flop those two so that folks can get back to their, their jobs if they need to.
Alrighty. So we will, we'll turn that into a motion to move public comment above approval of the minutes on the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion?
Oh, there's Mike.
There's Mike, yes. I think we'll take this vote and then we'll welcome Mike in. How's that? Okay, so the motion is to move public comment above approval of the minutes on today's agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand or indicate by saying aye. Ron Kumitz's hand is up, and he said aye. And so are the remaining task force members' hands up. So with that, I'm going to take a quick pause here and just welcome Mike Dungus to the call. Can you hear us okay?
For my part. Yeah, I apologize for my tardiness at an intercity emergency, so.
Okay, understood. All right, so we will move then right to public comment. We have several people here, so if you could raise your hand or otherwise indicate that you'd like to give public comment, that would be helpful.
Steve Whitaker.
Okay, Stephen, go ahead.
I was hoping to let the New Hampshire folks go at it first if they're prepared. Otherwise, I'll start on a less jovial note.
All right, let me go right to Becky then. Becky, do you have any comments you'd like to share with us?
Hang on, hang on, Barb, can I exert a minute here? Senator Renner is clearly at the State House and probably has other things to do, so if she has public comment, I would ask that she go first.
Oh, okay, that, that is fine.
I'm here to listen this week. Thanks so much. I appreciate it. All right, very good.
All right, Becky, how about you?
Um, so I'm just, I personally want to hear what you guys are doing, but I do know Ray has some comments.
So thank you for letting us in, and especially this early in the meeting. We are looking, we are doing a major upgrade to our dispatch center here in the North Country. We are going through the Northern Regional Borders Commission for a grant of approximately $900,000. And we're trying to make it as quick as possible. And basically, one large component of it's mapping, all right? And we can get into more details. Becky would be glad to give you those on that. And we're looking into simulcasting. We are looking for a letter of support possibly from your board, all right, for this grant that we're applying for. We have to have our preliminary grant application in by March 15th. And where we do dispatching for a large portion of the North Country that also includes several towns in Vermont. We were hoping to get your help there. And we really want to try to get our foot into the door with working with you folks in the future with a possible location of a tower on Mount Monadnock in Leamington. And just because we're doing so much with your, your area, Kane in Vermont is one of what we call our core towns, which is the five towns that run the Northern Borders Dispatch. So we really want to get involved with you folks in Vermont to, to all work together to put this together because we're a classic New Hampshire area that's dispatching for the small towns along the Connecticut River Valley and further out. We have significant situations on our border with the Canadians, with the, all the people that are sneaking across the border, et cetera, like that. And we really need to develop a much better communication system for Vermont, New Hampshire, all of our states involved. And we think that you folks could be a real asset, and us working together would really make the best bang for the buck for everybody. I hope I gave you a quick synopsis of why we'd like to be with you and our current need for a letter of support.
So thank you for that, and we can certainly take the conversation offline about a letter of support that I could then bring back to the group to make a decision on whether or not that's something the group would like to, to do. So if you could work through Corey Chase to give us some draft language for a letter of support and more details about the grant that you're applying for, then I can bring that back to the task force group. I just want to point out that as we move towards, towards the starting line, which will then result in a lot happening in a lot of lanes at the same time, there's going to be a lot of work done in the scope of Act 78. There will be a lot of work happening on the Vermont side, and it will implicate the border communities as well. So as we move into planning what the future system looks like, it is inevitable that we will be working together. So it would be terrific to start nurturing that relationship now. We're not, we're not there yet, but I think that staying in tune along the way sounds like a really great idea. So thanks for taking the time to, to come talk to us.
Yeah, so you have our addresses and stuff. We want to be involved. It's important to both of us significantly. And let's get, work together and get a real, much better system than we have at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. Okay, Stephen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'll point out from my preliminary talks with Northern Borders Dispatch is that they don't have map display of Annie and Ally, despite the fact that Vermont's 911 system includes that dispatch facility. And we legitimately brag around the country that we're next generation 911 with all this Annie and Ally display capability, but we kind of left Colebrook out as an orphan. That's a legitimate concern that we should remedy sooner than later. I have warned them that this task force isn't moving as fast as they hope to move, and the challenge will be to make some decisions quickly with the task force that we know will not, that our experts advise will not come back to haunt us so that we could lend support and let, you know, Colebrook move forward possibly faster than we are prepared to. I want to, is now the appropriate time to comment on the draft project work plan and the draft CDS plan? Or you can open up public comment when you later get to those sections of the agenda.
Now is the time, Stephen. Yep.
Okay, well, I first note that the public, the project, planning project, plan, system planning, project plan is not a plan at all. It looks like a bunch of cut and paste from the Project Management Institute, but it demonstrates and includes no vision or scope of what this project is about. So I have warned you about not doing the due diligence on TeleVate, and this is a prime example. I had learned years ago from Terry LaValle that this is a, this is a business model of keeping the contract documents or even the RFP vague enough to where you can do as little as possible and get away with it. And I'm real concerned that no project scope definition for LMR, LTE, resiliency, redundancy, inventories, financial model, none of that is in this document. It really just, it's a shame that we've had to wait. This document was due January 12th according to the contract, and here it is, end of February, and we're getting such a hollow and useless document. Not useless because it does include some good, you know, PMI verbiage, but I'm raising that as a real red flag that we do not have trusted guidance, and we don't have adequate capacity on this task force to manage that project manager. In fact, it appears that the project manager wants to set it, the management team wants to set itself in league with the two chairs and call all the shots and just keep the board as a work group advised. And that's not the way this is supposed to work. No action is supposed to happen without the task force voting on it. And in effect, that's, if you read the document carefully, it, it's further rarefied. Anyway, I would encourage people to read it. I'll make sure it's available to anyone who doesn't have it already. But the fact that I did speak to Co-Chair Morrison, and she suggested that that once the subject matter expert is under contract, that all the specificity from their work plan will auto, you know, be inserted into the plan, but that's, that's kind of the other way around. The project manager is supposed to have the vision and the direction and the sequence already specified, and you negotiate a contract from that, and we clearly don't have that here. So I've been warning you again and again, and now it's coming to fruition, that we've got the wrong project management team, and we're not much further forward than we were a month ago. As regards to the CDS plan, I want to raise a big red flag on that because it clearly the reference to regional is that regional systems will be allowed to co-locate on their tower. We are at real risk of this being found in impermissible use from the congressional intent to support the transition to regional statewide communications, public safety communications. And this is in effect building up the state systems when there's been no agreement of who is going to use the state systems and under what circumstances. So without that architecture, there's no nexus at all between these improvements and regional dispatch transition. So I believe that this nine million is corrupting the process that this trend, that this task force is supposed to be undertaking. It's just skewed all the, you know, air out of the room, oxygen out of the fire, and has all the capacity that, and attention that Jen and Corey should be spending on getting this task force plan initiative underway in favor of evading statutory planning and independent review requirements, breaking it down into smaller pieces to pretend that it's not one project that requires, you know, a, a business case and sources of funds and lifecycle cost analysis, et cetera. That, that planning is not done, and it's unlikely to have been, to be done in time to get independent reviews done in time to get vendor contracts underway. So we need to really think, think seriously about risking the nine million being available in a future budget cycle and getting focused on one planning methodology, not two. One, that the CDS undermines the sequence, the planning, the governance, oversight, et cetera, of the legislatively authorized task force planning model. That's enough for now.
Thank you, Stephen. Is there anyone else from the public that wants to make some comments today?
Barb, if you're good, are you going to cover legislative? If not, I could do that for, for Kim Cheney or offline.
No, I think offline, I don't know that we, well, we have a project status agenda item, so perhaps we can include legislative updates there. But we will, if there's no one else wishing to make public comment, we will move on. Okay, two, approval of the minutes. So we have a set of minutes from February 14th, regular meeting number 19. Are there any corrections or changes needed to these minutes? I think, Kim, you're unmuted right now. All right, hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 14th?
So moved.
Move the task force to approve the minutes that is written.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jen. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes from February 14th, raise your hand and/or, or indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ron. And I see all other task force member hands are up, so the minutes are approved. Okay, we have done public comment, so we will move to project status reports. Jen, you and I didn't have an opportunity to talk about this ahead of time. Would we like the TeleVate to review the two status reports that haven't been distributed?
Sure. I mean, the, the status reports were circulated to the task force and to people who regularly attend these meetings, plus they were posted to our website. So I'm not sure we need them to completely go through them, but since we're still a little bit early in the process, we can open it up for feedback on if there's information or sections of that. We're trying to format it in a consistent manner so that, you know, each status report looks good. If task force members have feedback on items they'd like to see that they didn't see, now would be a great time to to mention it so that we can ensure that these weekly status reports are providing the level of information that, that members want to see.
All right then, so task force members. Input feedback on the status reports? I can say that I like to see them from week to week, the things moving from one, from the summary to the, from the completed, on the list to do, to the completed list, and so on and so forth. So it's working for me. Sounds like there's not a lot of comment, so is that, should I assume it's working for everyone?
Working for me.
Okay. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, it's working for me as well. I think that if we're willing to leave that open to adjustment as we get deeper into the projects and as the information gets thicker, we may want to find a better way to do summaries, but I think for now it's perfect, so.
Excellent. Anyone else? Okay, Rick or Dom, do you have anything to add about the weekly status reports?
Nothing further. Just thank you for the comments, and we'll continue to, to update those as appropriate. And if there are additional comments or additional items you would like to see incorporated, happy to do so. Please let us know.
Sounds good. Excellent. I think we could take the same approach with the project plan review. So that was distributed earlier this week to task force members. Discussion around that. Input on the project plan review.
I would just share the observation that the project plan review is not finalized, and it won't be finalized until we have our subject matter experts fully on boarded and we have created the unified project plan. There's not going to be a separate plan that TeleVate runs with, and then a separate plan that the folks doing the scope of work implicated in Act 78 are doing. It's going to be one unified plan. Go ahead, Mike.
Correct.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to highlight that. I appreciate this process. I know there's public comment that's saying a lot of this process is taking too long and we're not moving fast enough. The, the complexity involved in what we're trying to do, and I know a lot of task force members know this already, but the complexity involved, we're trying to do and do it accurately, accurately. As we've seen many years prior, moving too quickly can result in a discombobulated set of solutions that don't actually align and get us to where we need to be. Having that plan that is finalized with our subject matter expert and then monitored and managed by our project manager is so critical to us moving forward. And I know it's taking additional time, and I know it seems like a long and arduous process because it is, but the, the more we can spend on the front end developing these systems appropriately now and pacing ourselves correctly with the understanding that there's urgency for different things, I think will end up resulting in a much better long-term output and vision for the state and it's, in, in all of these different centers that we're going to need to be doing this for. So I really appreciate the fact that we are taking a paced and metered approach. I appreciate that the task force understands the urgency in which this does need to get done, and I do think that we are doing the appropriate due diligence by making sure we don't jump ahead and create multiple plans for multiple things until we have all the ducks in the row. And I know that's a, a long breath to say, I think we're heading in the right direction, but it's, it's, I think it needs to be said that we are moving at the pace we need to move, and if we can move faster, we will, but we are moving as quickly as we can to get the job done.
Excellent. I think that was very well said. Bron, do you have a comment?
Yes, I, I think I'd like to just add to what Mike was saying. From, from my perspective, as, you know, representing the fire service, as well as from a technical perspective, we, we need to keep in mind that we, as a state, have approximately 253 fire departments, and the overwhelming majority of those departments are staffed by volunteers. People who, for lack of a better description, you can't just simply tell them, we're going to do it this way because otherwise we're going to stop sending you a paycheck. We don't give them a paycheck, and if they, if they take offense, they think we're trying to force something on them, things are just going to go to hell in a handbasket very quickly, and we're not going to get the buy-in that we need to make this a coherent statewide, you know, link of regional systems that all function together nicely. So rushing ahead with this is, is not a great way to go. This is going to be a lot of work to get, to make, to understand what the individual needs are, what their wants are, and, and what their preferences are, and to convince them maybe that things need to operate slightly different than they're used to. Because we, we want everybody to come willingly not to be forced into this and have all sorts of negative feelings about what we eventually accomplish.
Thank you. I agree, I agree with that as well. Any other comments from task force members on the project plan? Okay. While Ron was talking, I was reminded, and we can do this under new business about stakeholder engagement from
Barbie froze.
Am I back? Hello?
Working on my end. You're working on my end.
We can hear you.
Okay. Okay, I'll keep going. Today. We'll bring up the stakeholder information, Rick and Dom, that you sent over just prior to this meeting during new business for people to take a look at. How's that?
All right, very good. Thank you for that. Yeah, so, so I'll be, I'll preface what I'm about to, to show so that everyone is aware. So I created, we, we created a draft stakeholder update, which is a, you know, a newsletter regarding the project that is intended to inform the, the General Assembly and, and, and all the stakeholders. And so we, we, you know, we created it so that we could at least show, show the, the work in progress today and to also solicit input and, you know, it's input from the task force.
Rick, could I, could I interrupt you one second, Rick? I'm very, very sorry. I skipped over, I skipped over an agenda item. I went to new business. Pause for a minute. I want, I need to go back, I'm sorry, to the draft CDS plan. Jen, are you, are you able to hear me now, and can you present on the draft CDS plan? Sorry about that.
I'm sure. I'm going to actually turn my camera off because I think the wind is creating quite a bit of trouble up here, so I'm going to keep my bandwidth down. So everybody has an opportunity to see the draft plan for the $9 million congressionally directed spending. This plan, as, as noted, has morphed over time. Folks are probably very familiar with the history of this grant and the fact that we received it through a funding stream that we did not anticipate and caused us to have to redo the plan. What was circulated is what we intend to, well, once we receive feedback and massage and feedback that we receive is what we intend to submit as the new project plan. At the time that we resubmit it back to the feds, we will be asking for an extension of the performance period, which we have enlisted the help of Senator Sanders' office, and we are hopeful that we can get an extension of the performance period. It's, it's just, I mean, the, the amount of work represented in just that plan is humongous, and it is going to be very difficult to pull off all of those projects within the current performance plan, which ends at the end of 2024. So we are hoping that we will get an 18-month extension of the performance period. So that, that is a piece of news that I will keep you posted on. We're, we're super hopeful that we can make that happen. It is, it is a mountain of work if we don't get the extension, and it is possible that we won't be able to complete all of the projects. So, you know, that's why we were asking for feedback on which pieces, how we roll them out in terms of RFPs, et cetera, will depend somewhat on how long it takes to do the project. That will help determine priority, but also the amount of impact that the individual projects can have towards benefiting whatever the future statewide system is. And that's the key here, is that all of these projects have been developed to do two things: be allowable under the COPs technology funding stream and reflect the intent behind Act 78, which is to build the strongest possible, for us, for, for us to build the strongest possible backbone so that we are best positioned with the most recent strongest possible backbone so that we are best positioned with the most recent technologies to be able to implement whatever design is decided at the end of this, of this process. And to have moved us closer to, to what that would look like. For instance, the project on moving to prepare to go to simulcast and investments like that. Expanding the current LMR network. And for our friends in Colebrook, there are two two proposed site expansions. You probably saw that. That they're in the area of Canaan and Ferdinand are two proposed new sites. So that should be a benefit in the North Country area. So again, I'm opening it up. If people don't want to comment in this meeting, you are welcome to email me or Corey with your feedback about this plan. It's our intention to leave it out there for folks to noodle on and give feedback till the end of next week. And then at the end of next week, we are going to be submitting our revised plan to, back to the, the COPS office. So that's, that's the current state of affairs and we welcome your feedback.
Mike, Mike, go ahead.
I know I'm talking a lot today.
We like that. That's good.
Again, I just want to kind of throw out a thank you. I know that this and I, and again, I, I joined the task force when it was created and there was already kind of that shuffling going on with that congressionally directed spending and trying to resolve this. So I want to say, you know, as a, as a, you know, network engineer who's designed infrastructure and backbones for the, you know, different systems over the many years that I've been you know, tasked with things like that. The idea that using that congressionally directed spending in the way that it's been given to us and making this fit as best possible for the future use of the, of the PTSC and what we're trying to do with the bigger picture. I really appreciate that effort because there are many things in many directions that could have been gone, that this could have gone in. And I think that core infrastructure is so critical to what we're going to be doing as we move forward and the state's willingness to allow us to share and use that as it gets built. And the future of what's going to end up happening, I, I like where this is going. I've looked through most of it. I probably won't add too much comment, Jen. I think the team that's put this together has done a phenomenal job. And I do see where this will add major value to the systems that we can use in the future as, as we come down the line. Of course, there's going to be some ambiguity between now and the time that our subject matter expert puts together their solution. But the key, and I think we've talked about this before, the key of using these funds to get us as close to whole as we can with these funds so that it can be used for the future regional dispatch program is, is reflected quite well in this so far. And I'd love to see what the final version looks like once you get it finalized. So thanks for that. And I just want to throw that comment in there.
Thank you. The, the credit goes to the team. You can be sure I did not dream that up way out of my wheelhouse. But yes, lots of folks have been working very hard to be responsible and responsive to the the sort of two considerations, the Act 78 and the confines of the funding stream. So if we don't have any other feedback now, I, like I said, I just want to reiterate, please send it either directly to me or to Corey or any member of the task force and we will put it into the mix as we develop the final draft for resubmission. Thank you.
Jen, I, I do have one comment if there aren't any others from task force members. On the, on the plan, Project Nine Part A talks about dispatch improvements and consoles. And when I read that, I think of a console, really, I think of as like the workstation where, where the stuff sits that allows the dispatch function. But in reading through the description, it seems like it's a bit more it's a bit more than that. So I wonder if you or Corey or whoever could just how Project Nine
We'll let Corey take a, a quick explanation of that.
Yeah, part nine, Project Nine, Part A in particular. I think I'm still here.
Barb's here.
Yep. You hear my question?
I heard it and I started to say Corey can take a swing at that. And then my connection keeps getting weird. Which is highly unusual because we have outstanding speed connection here. But Corey, are you able to answer the question about Project Nine?
Yes, I am. I, I was waiting. I thought that Barb was still in the middle of responding to a question. So Barb, your, your, your question was to describe more, more fully the, the dispatch console and its function?
Yes, and how it benefits statewide communications, right? So I know this has to be state owned projects that result from the spending, but what's the, what is the statewide impact of Project Nine?
So a dispatch console is a, is a device that's at a workstation, a call, call taker workstation that allows the, the dispatcher to communicate over the radio network. In, in Vermont, presently at Vermont State Police, we have dispatch consoles that are PC based. And it's a touchscreen that allows you to push a button and select which, which channel, which radio channel you will speak over when you, when you use your microphone to speak across the, the radio dispatch network. Did somebody have a question?
Yeah, is, is that the Avtech console that you're referring to?
Yes. Did that answer your question? Yes. So a presently a dispatch, the that, the, the concept of a dispatch console is somewhat amorphous because there are in, in this, in this tech, technology spectrum, what we're talking about, it, it can include many different things. But specifically what we're talking about is a, is a touchscreen that allows you to select which radio channel you will transmit on when you push the microphone button. The proposal that we're talking about here is to upgrade the dispatch consoles to embed a voice telephony service into the same device. And that would have the benefit of for VSP eliminating an aging desktop analog telephone that is integrated for the, the current single use headset. So right now presently for VSP, a, a VSP dispatcher has to use the same headset to speak over the telephone and speak over the radio so that they can seamlessly do that without having to change headsets. That's a very convoluted process for us to, to maintain the quality of that, of that interaction. Because they have to be able to use a single headset to do both of those things. And the analog telephone and the current dispatch console are, it creates frustration for us and frustration for the dispatchers because the quality of, of service is difficult to maintain. And these are two aging tech, the analog and telephone is an aging technology. What we propose to do is to upgrade the, the the dispatch consoles to integrate modern digital telephony into the same device so that a single headset can work in a single in a single system so that they can seamlessly integrate between telephone calls, put, put a person on, continue to speak with a telephone, per someone on the telephone while also speaking with the, with the person over the, with VSP over dispatch or, or other, other first responders over dispatch. By integrating those into a single package that will solve many problems for VSP, it will relieve workflow problems for VSP for the dispatchers. It will make dispatching much simpler for, for the, via VSP dispatching. That, that is the primary purpose of this, to integrate that service. However, we recognize that once we've done that, once we've integrated that service and eased operation for VSP dispatchers, it has an ancillary benefit that this is, is easily extensible. That means that we can now we will, we will be setting ourselves up so that we can easily port that, that experience, that desktop, desktop console experience to other locations, other PS apps within our, within our network or to other, other dispatch agencies around the state. Because we will be porting the ability to, to interact with radio service and telephony service. So it makes it easier to move and port and stand up temporarily, we could temporarily stand up this, this patch consoles, moving both, both access to the radio services and telephony into a new location quickly and easily. But we could also, on a temporary basis, for instance, if something happened to a PS app, we could temporarily move it. But we could also move it to other dispatch. We could move that service to other PS apps. And it, it makes that whole process portable.
So I would like to Yeah, you did great, Corey. And I just want to point out that when we talk about, so what's the statewide benefit here? The two PS apps operated by the Vermont State Police handle, Barb, you'd know the number better than I, but more than 75% of the 911 calls and then get them to where they need to go. So there's obvious benefit to being able to receive 911 calls from all over the state. And again, this is a key piece of building in a more resilient system to be able to if flooding impacted one of the PS apps or something else, being able to pick up and move the, the entity that receives three quarters of the 911 calls across the state.
Well, I'll correct you just a little bit because it's just under 70%, but
I was close.
On a good, yes, when, when things are operating well, which they are at this point. So, so yes, I see your point there. And thank you, Corey, for the explanation of, of what was involved here. Are there any other comments now on this plan? All right. I think, Jen, unless you have something more to add here, we can move on.
No, I'm all set.
Okay, good. All right. So that brings us to, back to, one might say, new business. Rick, I'll hand it back over to you and I apologize for the interruption earlier, but we'd like to hear about your, your stakeholder information that we got just before this meeting.
All right. Thank you, Barb. And thank you, everyone. I, I'll start over, but I will, and no need to apologize. We, we all live in the fast lane and things change on the, on the fly. So the task force said, you know, their intention was to keep, you know, the general assembly and the stakeholders and the community informed about the project in a way that, you know, provided both content and status and information about the task force and information about the program. And, and so, you know, what, 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 what was decided on is that the stakeholder update, a newsletter, so to, you know, so to speak, would be published so that we would get information of interest and value out to the community and, and also to solicit their ongoing participation and keep them informed and get them excited about the program. So you know, what we decided was to create, you know, a, 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 right now it's called a stakeholder update from the task force. It, names may change, but the concept remains the same. Keep everyone informed, solicit their input and, and keep, you know, and, and, and excite them about the program. And so what I want to do is share, I, I sent, we worked on, we wanted to be sure that we were meeting our, our obligations on, on the project plan, you know, that we said, we'll get something published and, and we did. And so that's the goal. We're going to make comments of what we're working on and, and as well as making sure that we publish that information in a timely manner. And so what I'm going to display is a draft. So I, I'll walk you through the concept here. Let me know when you can see it on your screen.
We got it.
Barb, could, could somebody send that to me via email? I don't have video here.
Uh, yeah, uh. I believe we can, Jen.
If it's in my inbox.
Oh, yeah, of course. It's being shared. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yes, Stephen, I'm gonna send it.
I, I just want to reiterate though, that this is the first draft. It's hot off the press this morning, worked on it last couple of days. Elizabeth Herring and her team assembled it. There are some typos in here, for example, the, the general assemble, like in the first line there, it should be the general assembly, but but, you know, I, I forwarded to Jen and Barb this morning so that they could, you know, decide if we wanted to just present it. So keep in mind that, you know, the goal here is to get input on this document and, and, you know, and ensure that it's edited, but it is a rough draft, but the concept is not the same. So, you know, what I'm thinking, our goal is in this inaugural edition, we, you know, we let, we, we let them know, we let the reader know that are our intention, you know, what we're doing and why we're doing it. And, you know, so in this first edition, we talk about the project and, and, you know, so what, why it's, what's its format, what it's the overview of what it is. And I want to keep it, I was trying to keep this to no more than two pages for this, for this addition, but the first one is three pages because we got a little bit, maybe overzealous. We want to have a did you know section in here. For example, you know, the, the did you know is, is intended to introduce the reader to roll of an information regarding the state of public safety communications in, in the state. And, you know, for the first edition, you know, as thinking about, well, let them, let's let them know how many 911 call centers and PS apps are out there. And also, you know, indicate to them that, you know, that, that that's going to be an initial focus. We're, you know, the, the, the program is going to work directly with the PS app. So I think we could also, as Ron mentioned earlier, in the next one, talk about, you know, that there's, we have, you know, approximately 253 fire departments, most of which are volunteers. And this, the tension here was just to provide some information, you know, a quick snippet of information about public safety within, within the state of Vermont that, that is informative. So we also provide, you know, here's our website. And on this second page, we talked, we wanted to introduce the community to, to the stakeholder team. Here's, here, here are, as is required by Act 78, here are our representatives. And in this first edition, we included a little bio of our co-chairs. And then the next edition, you know, we would add in, you know, two, two additional, you know, add two additional members of the task force and provide an overview. And so if you're in agreement to that, as we have requested from Jen and Barb, if you would provide you know, a photo and a brief bio that we can include that in, in the following, you know, the next newsletter. So you know, we, we put project status in here. Here's a, a highlight of, of, of some of the activities to date and the key activities. And, and, you know, this, this isn't intended to be a, a status report. This is intended to provide key elements of what we're achieving and, and what's been done over the course of the project. In this one here, we, you know, we introduced the project management consulting team. And future, in a future update, we would, you know, we would introduce the, the community to the system planning, subject matter expert firm. And so, you know, I wanted to, there is a providing, there's a contact us also. So certainly we want to inform the community about, about the website to go for information, but if, you know, we thought it might be appropriate to, if, if there, if there was direct inquiries made to the task force and, and we hadn't decided on that yet, but I, I put that in as a placeholder in the event that we decide we want to allow the community to, you know, ask questions or to provide information or not, you know, it's, it's really your decision as a task force. So, you know, with this, you know, with this inaugural very rough draft, although I, much of it, it could quickly be turned into a, a release so that we can get it out in early March. I've, I've got a Word document of the content and I can forward that around for editorial review. We, we're, we're going to edit, I'm going to go back and edit now that I have this because I worked on it, I worked on it late last night. And Elizabeth was able to get it done so that we could show it today. But I, I just want to, you know, get your, you know, share this this draft with you and, and get feedback from, from the task force on what your thoughts are and any, you know, any immediate reactions. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you, Rick. Comments, questions, input from task force members? And I am not seeing all of you. Jim, you have something?
I just wanted to say I like it.
Very good. I am not seeing it. I am not seeing everyone.
It's a great first draft. I'll look forward to taking a, a look at it on the larger screen, just because my eyes are old. But, but I'm, I'm very appreciative of the thought behind it. And I think ultimately, it doesn't really matter what we think, it's what the people receiving it think and what they want to know. So with the inaugural edition, I think we should make sure there's a feedback section, like, you know, what would you like to hear more about, that type of thing. And, and I think we talked about this, Rick or Dom, a way, a way for the general public to communicate with us, drop questions or, so some, some way to be interactive with us should be included in each edition.
And, and I fully agree with that, but I didn't want to go ahead and make a decision on behalf of the task force. But, you know, how they can contact you, I mean, I can put in, in here, you know, contact us and then it's, you know, put a, a statement to that effect in here. But I want to be sure that we know, you know, that we decide how we want them to contact us. And so, but.
We might have to set up a mailbox. We might have to set up an, an email address, you know, some psctf@dp, you know, dps or, or at vermont.gov and then have it go to the two, you two project managers and me and Barb and Paul. And then we can, if it needs to go somewhere else, we can send it to the appropriate party or bring it to the task force as a whole before we reply. But we, we, we will have to figure out a, a method to be interactive.
All right. A frequency on publishing this, I mean, we had talked about every two weeks. You know, it could be weekly, bi-weekly or monthly. It's really, you know, it's up to the task force, the frequency of it. You know, obviously, we're, to begin, at this, at this stage of the program, things are going to start moving more quickly once we, once we have the system planning vendor on board. And, but, you know, there will be, you know, there will be status items. But, you know, I, I, like I said, I have a Word document. I'll forward this around and after I edit it internally. And then, you know, after we edit internally, I'll forward it around. So I, I appreciate your, your comments. And if you're, if the task force is in agreement, you know, with this, a concept of introducing the community and having, you know, a, a, a photo and bio of each of our, of our task force members, then please do forward a photo and a brief bio so that we can see it up for future releases of the update.
What do task force members think about for periodicity? Every two weeks or every month? Or what's the general thought there?
I don't know that I'd worry about doing it more frequently than every month. If you start publishing stuff and, and it turns into fluff that just populates page, then people will stop reading it.
Yep. I tend to agree, Ron.
I do, too. I was thinking monthly would be good, and, and we'll have lots of opportunities in the update for, you know, ways they can get in touch with us in the meantime or, or web pages they can go to to get more information. So that, that's what I would recommend to start with anyway, monthly.
All right. And also, and also solicit ideas on did you know content, you know? I mean, we, that's a very, very interesting information that, that, you know, we should inform the community about. But, you know, your ideas, the task force's ideas on what we want to, we put in this did you know, you know, the section of the newsletter be of value to hear from the task force as well. Okay, so with that said, I'm, I'll make, I want to make some edits to it, and I'll send out this, distribute this, a, a, a next version to the task force along with a Word document. And feel free to provide editorial comment back. And I go, my goal is to get that out to you today, if not, not later than tomorrow.
Okay. That sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Okay. We are ready then to move on to the next agenda item, which is executive session. So for the purposes of discussing one or more contracts, so I will take us through our usual two motions here. So first, I'll make a motion that the task force find that sharing information about bitter responses publicly would put the task force at a substantial disadvantage in making a decision about awarding a contract or contracts. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. I think it was Mike. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor of making this finding, please raise your hand or indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I hear you, Mike.
Aye.
I hear you, Ron. I see Jim's hand. My hand is up. Jen?
Barb, I've had to jump onto another call, but I'm, I'm with you on going to executive session.
Okay, all right. Okay. I guess we have, we have the majority of members present, right, Callie? We're good to move on. Okay. All right. So the next step then is to make a motion to move into exec, I will make a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discussing one or more contracts. And I would like to invite Televate reps into that session. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ron. And all in favor, please raise your hand or, and, or, I'm sorry, or, indicate by saying aye.
And.
All right. I see all task force member hands are up, including Ron's. And we will move into executive session via the other link on your calendar. See you there.
Are you anticipating action after executive session?
Um, um, possibly. We'll let you know when we're going back into public session.
Yeah, I can let you know when we are headed back in. So if there is anyone who is in attendance today, who I do not normally send that notification to, please just make sure to share how you'd like to receive that with me.
Okay. I'll see task force in the other link. Thank you.